Good evening and welcome to the Joint Town Council's Special Meeting and Budget Committee Meeting of Thursday, March 20th. Adam Pluck, would you call the role, please?
Peter Talbot.
Here.
Jim Jakes.
Here.
Dina Allard.
Here.
Patricia Kramer.
Fiona Pearson.
John Mylone.
Here.
Greg Wolfe.
Here.
Don Walsh.
Here.
David Velmer.
Here.
Corvus Cuthbert.
Please join me in the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We really only have two things on the agenda tonight. The one is the, the first is the discussion of the operating and capital budgets for public safety. We will have a public comment session at the conclusion of our workshop. And with that, I will turn it over to our budget chairman, Mr. Jakes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, so we're going to cover, obviously, fire police tonight. So, just so there's no confusion, Chief, right, we're here tonight because we like Jack Kessler better.
Issues to that.
I'm not fighting you.
It's purely cleared into my building. Nobody can come here.
No, it's great to be here in the firehouse. It's nice to have a little change, change venue, obviously, but also a way to kind of honor the public safety and our first responders by not being here tonight. And so, with that, keep that. It was a.
I'll do it. I'll just very quickly orient folks into our books. The horizontal book, our detailed line item book, kind of our first meeting, got to go in through the individual department line items. Page 105 is the start of the fire department budget, but also a few pages before that is, 99 will be the civil preparedness budget, which Jack is also responsible for. So, I think we'll start with fire department, but just so folks know where to go as you flip through those pages. But then, I think Jack will do an overview of his budget and then touch on capital requests as well after that. He'll get that in the other book when we get there. So, without further ado, I'll turn over to Fire Chief Jack.
Thank you. I don't know how involved you want to be. I don't know if you want to go line by line. I went through it highly, anything that was increasing. I was just, it increases unless you want to talk about anything, I'm sure.
That makes sense, Jack. Okay. I'm going to jump right in. To the salaries are all the same percentage. No increases, no additions to that. Building materials, that's what we fire up. Materials and supplies for buildings inside and outside, that's going up. That's only, it's 500 bucks for the slow-hump. Bid notices, we have, we have a couple of things that we're going to be putting out to bid, so I had to increase that by a couple of dollars.
Sorry, Chief, right on 107.
I just, I was, yeah, I just looked this one way. Fuel is increasing by 11%, massive rate. That's just proportionate to how many calls we get. Go big, increase calls, we use it to increase fuel. And last year, we did almost 1,100 calls. That's one of the businesses we've had since we started in 1920. Utilities, the radio, and Neil, he probably hears the same thing from Neil. We were in a bunch of different contracts for maintenance with the whole world, and that goes up just as much as they charge us. So, that would be. Down to page 109, water cooler and supplies and rentals, went up 500. Data processing, again, those are software contracts that we have and we do our fire reporting with. That went up 40%. That's the vendor re-raising the prices, all days. Under professional expenses, memberships to organizations, they all increased slightly, but we increased that budget by, to match. If I'm going too slow or too fast, just let me know. The other two that have increases that hurt the most are the last two lines on 110. The workers' comp went up 42,000, and the pension is held at 565. I think it starts to go down next year. Jim, Rashawn, if we hit a plateau, then I think it starts to decline or increase.
Yes, that's, that's an increase of 28,700 in the actuarial determinate contribution for this year. That's a placeholder estimate a little bit as we're trying to finalize some fire department posed, just slight corrections to the previously adopted guidance there, but it's a slight increase and then, yes, I think over time it does slow to come back.
That's pretty much it in a nutshell. We can, we can go deeper if you want. Matt, you have the answering questions on it, but it's pretty straightforward. No frills. If you want to jump to page 99, that's civil preparedness.
Let's, let's see if there's stuff before we.
I think stick with fire.
Sure. Yeah, so, you know, normally when we're going through this process, we're kind of looking at nice to haves and trying to decide around when to do that.
This year, there is no nice to have.
This year is a little different. There are things that we've kind of, you know, we've had and maybe we can't facilitate.
The past couple of years, nice to haves have come from the year.
Yeah.
So, this is not, these are not nice to haves, this is more.
Exactly, exactly. And I just, you know, just want to make sure we're, you know, obviously, to be a larger public too, that we're communicating that, which this is very, you know, there isn't a lot to work with here. So, looking at things to, unfortunately, cut, right? Even if we wanted to. So, just looking through, I mean, I, you know, unfortunately, we're kind of like nickel and diming things a little bit. I mean, if one thing, one question I have is the 5409, the hydrant maintenance, which 2024, we were at 40,000. 2025, we went up to 55, or sorry, we went up to 60. And then, the request or Rashawn's recommendation is 55. I'm wondering if there's, you know, if we were to go back to 40 there, it's 15 grand. What, what does that do operationally? Do we reduce that type of?
Yeah, so that's been certainly a topic for a number of years now, and it's a, it's a very complicated one, and Jack can, can fill in a little of the operational challenges there. But in short, that, we increased that actually consolidated about four, five months ago as parts of fire department, fire hydrant maintenance and servicing and even painting were in sort of a couple of different lines, including public works department. We merged them all together a few years back. But one of the most unpredictable parts of that is it's, it's where Jack goes for funding the replacement of a damaged fire hydrant, as well as trying to get to annual maintenance and painting, servicing of exhausting the fire hydrants. And so, one of the challenges is if you have hit and runs, so to speak, where someone takes out a fire hydrant, the cost of replacing a fire hydrant if it's been completely sheared off can be 15, 12 to 15, I think.
We replaced one hydrant, we had to report it and replace the hydrant step was 14,000.
$14,000. So, that's kind of the worst case scenario, and there may be some alternatives to that that we can consider, but, but it is an expensive proposition. And one of the challenges, of course, is if there's not an insurance, if there's not an insured vehicle to recoup costs for that, either again, a hit and run or an uninsured motorist, you can, we have to kind of keep that line through towards the end of the fiscal year. What we know, as you pointed out, fiscal '24, we came in under budget in that line and probably in hindsight could have set up a PO and done a few additional hydrant servicing and maintenance calls on that. But 60,000, and as you see, I trimmed it by $5,000, getting back to the point you just made. I've already gone through all of these budgets. You'll see this as a theme throughout all of the departments, and I cut 31,000 out of Jack's request already. So, this is sort of a further around beyond that. One of the ones I did take, and it pained me to do so, was we actually need to be doing more fire hydrant maintenance, I think, going forward, but knowing the fiscal reality we have and the budget and where the mill rate was shaping up, I was looking for every place and every budget I could. But it's that unpredictable nature that's a little bit of a challenge, and I know that's been an issue, Jack, that I've talked about a number of times over the last few years.
So, the majority of them are people back into knocking over a driveway and then we simply works out, we go pick up the hydrants, it'll be, it's, it up, and then there's a water, we'll fix it up, and then we push it on, it's low. I would say 90-plus percent. When they do hit them, they do an actual report, but police departments, I know they actually report the insurance, and we go through, we have insurance on them. But the great majority, they just still positive for a good time. They back into them, they just.
Right. Okay. So, that's the line where you want, you want to stay with the 55s?
I think we, I think we should, if we can. I also know it'll be in, I suspect that during public comment, because I know a gentleman, Mr. Might over there, he talked to me earlier today, as this is near and dear to his heart, his business, I think, and that'll be something I'm sure he'll comment on during public comment. But at least certainly from our perspective, I think, all things considered, it's a, it's a good budget line where it is. Certainly could increase it, but this is a budget where we're kind of looking for increases and increases.
Yeah, okay. And along the same lines, 5203, which is on page 107, building, building maintenance, I'm sorry, yeah, 203, supplies for the truck or supplies for vehicles and equipment.
Yes.
This, this was one again where it was, you know, if we were lower in 2024, now we're, our request is 65. Just wondering if we can moderate that. I know it's a small amount of money again, it's, you know.
That, that line is one that is going to have to probably should stay.
Yep.
Because we have equipment that's going to be 25, 26, 27, so bigger parts are breaking. I'm already 80% through it with another 12,000 covered for repairs, and I have a little bit for 24,000. So, I thought it was going to be a long, long time.
Okay. And maybe, Jack, a good opportunity, this will tie into the capital conversation, but maybe you could tell the, the story of the brake job that we had to do for one of the trucks, just in terms of the cost of that.
Yeah, just for the brakes on like the older trucks, I have a, I think it's about, it was almost 100. Nope. But it was a, it was a deal, I think, like 18,000 for a brake job. Because it needed drums and roads, because it's like 96. Everything's rusted, took it off, and they would pass it, I'd say, for inspection. So, they had, they had, they couldn't, they wouldn't even let us drive it, they called red line, truck had to be, they said, you're not taking these brakes. I'm just, I, I got it, it's a rescue, I mean, rescue truck, it got happy. And as the equipment gets older, it breaks.
Right, okay. And then, on fire marshals is an area where we recently had it stepped.
Correct.
One or, one or two the last couple of years?
Part-time.
And that was part-time to do with the, all the additional work in the north end?
Yeah, that, and we weren't, we weren't meeting the state statute, which nobody really needs, the state statute, it's next every hour, you see it on the social media.
Yeah.
But the fire inspectors are also the people that jump their trucks and drive that road. They are volunteer contingent three of the days, really, pretty many. Nine, well, nine, they have 10 calls you go to, there'll be people that are on the clock and you pull the trigger, make sure they.
Right. So, we're still at a, at a service level where we need to.
They're all working, they're all working hard.
Okay. All right.
And I don't want to leave you with the thought that when the north end is done, that goes away, because everything that they built up there is not going to be inspected. So, it's not just an initial, it's a constant, you know, every apartment building has to be inspected, every store has to be inspected. Just as a result of that, you know, something has to grow. We may do a part-time, don't be that busy or whatever. Yeah.
On the same note, I've been asked about the fire marshal. But we also started charging for the inspections, how long ago did we start? I mean, we weren't, we weren't charging for inspection, we changed that, correct?
This is going to be charged, planned reviews, not for inspection.
Planned reviews, yes.
But that number, I, I haven't looked at it in a month, but it's a significant.
Yeah, well, I walked into the fire marshal's office one day and I saw the plans, I'm like, holy crap, that's a lot of plans. It's a, it's a very time-consuming thing, and I just want to make sure, are we on target? Are we getting the right amount of money for the time that it takes to do that?
We have, we put it, I mean, it was very timely to put it into effect, because a lot of the plans were being pulled at that time, soon thereafter, the north end development. So, remember, that's only on commercial, private.
Right, exactly.
So, yeah, we can get the actual number, but I know it, it all flows through the building department revenue account anyway.
Right.
Part of the reason that number is, is even exceeding the estimates we had, and we budgeted very aggressively with that number last year. But it is there to offset, and I think, I wanted to say it's in the $100,000 of that.
If that's what we were doing, we'd say at least offset at least one, two.
Yeah, Tom Lozier gave me. Yeah, Tom Lozier gave me a report in our monthly meeting last, maybe last month or the month before, or at least halfway through the year. We, we were well on target, if not already surpassed the target, that would have offset that added cost of those fire inspectors. So, I was happy to see that. Again, you still see it as an expenditure, you see it on the added revenue.
But that revenue is going to go away.
But that revenue does, right, if you're not having that same level of commercial development, that isn't a recurring.
All right, I, I just happen to see the amount of plans that they, these guys have to look through, and I can't imagine how many hours it takes. I'm, I'm just hoping that I'm getting the right amount of revenue for the time that they're putting into it.
We've got one part-time staff number that's bold, he has one, he says plans on the different things for four hours.
Look, tell me they're doing a good job.
I wouldn't.
Chief, on the other side of things, on 109, 5406, the, the fire reporting software maintenance and contracts, it looks like we're on target to spend 12,000 this year. I assume, no?
Go ahead, go ahead. That's, that's the estimated, but yeah, there was.
Yeah.
Two different lines. Yep.
Okay. It's, I'm just, I want to make sure that you're going to be able to operate everything you need and we're not canceling any software or whatever.
We'll have that.
And do you know, Sean, do you have it there? Do you know where we are here?
Yeah, I think part of the reason I trimmed that, because I made sure in the last few years, you know, we hadn't spent above that $9,000 amount. And so, I do think there was, there was just one piece of software that either was in civil preparedness, because I think one of the notes on this was code red, which is in civil preparedness. So, that's where, you'll see that when we get into civil preparedness too, I don't think. Unless there's anything new, I think that number was still pretty good, unless it's the new software. Unless that's really correct. I think good.
Okay. All right, if you want to go to.
Is there one more question?
Yeah, sure.
While we're at this, can you give us an update on how we are in terms of volunteers and are, are we below or, how, how, are we above where we were last year? How are you doing?
We're down, we're down for, probably for the lowest we've been in 10 years.
Really?
And that's not by anybody's fault. It's just, if you look at the people that are going to our community, they don't adopt here, they don't adopt here for council alliance club, the fire department, it's just not, it's just a belcher thing that's changing, it's just, and we're not alone. The city of Torrey just closed a volunteer fire department, so there's, there's people following. So, I don't think we're there yet, but I want you all to be aware that there will be a day when I come to Sean and we're out there. Hopefully, I'm retired.
Me too. I'm sure.
Can you, can you give us kind of a chart of, you know, what it's been our volunteer has been in?
I don't have it right now, but I'll.
Yeah, no, I, no, not tonight, but.
About a few 10 years?
Yeah, just to give us a sense of.
Sure.
Trend.
Looking at the, so it shows 80 volunteers, right?
That's 80, but that includes people that are retired, that are still on board, so that's part of, not a point. So, 80 is the total number.
Yep.
Of compliant members, which is probably half. And I monitor staffing, I monitor response time, I monitor all of the key indicators, like fire chiefs, especially personnel. You and I are not throwing in any red flags, are we? But I think, you know, you, you should know that we're not the way we're 10 years. And this is not casting wind on anybody in the town, but if you spend a million dollars on housing, the last thing you want to do is get out of work, if you go apart from your work, maybe go to fire support, it's sad. That's just, that's the, the volunteer fire shooters model from the 40s, 50s, 60s, it's died, it's died.
Yep.
Nation one, it's a system, nation one.
But you have, it says an effective firefighting force on scene within 15 minutes of dispatch, 90% of the time, it shows 96%, right? So, you guys are obviously still doing a tremendous job.
15, yeah, I mean, I did, I actually got the number today, it's down around 11. That's greatly in part because of having, because the inspectors are all career firefighters somewhere else, so I didn't have to train to drive it, train, certification, fire marshal line at all times, and I had to use enough data responses.
First of all, thanks, Jack. I mean, obviously, very few, appreciate it. I'm just curious, probably the highest number, which is the personnel, you had, as I look at this, I'm just trying to understand, you had a really big increase from 24 to 25, and now this year is about half that, maybe a little less than half that. Did you add a person level of these? Why, why do we, I assume all these increases are just required, required or agreed upon salary increases and stress.
We added, the only, the only thing we added, just two part-time people who passed. Yeah, still getting added, we didn't anybody last year.
It's the deputy fire marshal position, I think, because we added mid-year.
Is that the one?
From 24.
From 530?
I have 24 to 25.
Twenty, that's, that's what happened there. Otherwise, you're. And I mean, I just, I really think it was, it's high as a big. On the volunteer, is there any opportunity with some of the housing, the apartment housing in town, which is likely to generate more younger occupants, that there might be an interest in volunteerism?
Good question. I've met with the people from the six, that's it. That's it. And they actually have cards, maybe a coaster, something else, it's about Cheshire. She was so proud of it, she gave me a, a mouse pad and a coaster. I looked at it, and I, do I say anything? She's, I'm like, you missed the H. She's like, oh my God, I owe her 300 of those things. Well, maybe you can find a Cheshire without the H. Now, they are, they're actually going to, they're looking to offer discounts then by volunteers, that one over there.
Oh, wow.
We are out there trying to do that. I wouldn't have the same conversation north of 691.
No, why, why is that?
That wouldn't happen.
No?
They're, they're very expensive, but I don't see the owner wanting to give the use price of that.
Would they at least allow you to post some things in their, in their?
I would have to ask the owner.
I mean, they have, I'm sure they have a fairly elaborate kind of rental office and center, maybe they.
They do, yeah. That's what I have, not.
I know my uncle, my oldest son came back to Cheshire after going to college, lived here for three years, tried to do a volunteer, but didn't do well. But he, he made an effort because he wanted to, and so maybe, I just think maybe some young people would.
They want to.
You don't mind.
You know, this is.
No father's disregard for judgment.
He knows I'm kidding, he doesn't.
Make sure they said I was John Mylone.
Same name, by the way.
Age is silent.
So, I, just, just a thought, because.
Yeah, we're doing.
It's not only new homes that are going in town, but the apartment units, we generate, I think, on average, more younger people, so just a thought. Thank you.
No problem, thank you. Anything else?
We're going to discuss capital as well, Sean, is that right?
We'll do civil.
Civil first and then local, switch over to the other book. This is going to be real quick, because there's only a few line items in there.
Just a reminder, back on page 99, any kind of 100?
Yep.
Starting at 100.
Going down to 203, that's increasing 10%. A little bit.
10.
That's, that's added because we added generators to our feed. So, we add more generators, we add maintain more generators. And fuel, the same thing, a little more fuel. And the only other thing is code red notifications.
I wish that's the other one I mentioned, that it was, I think it was just in two spots when we first had a request, so the, in this year's budget, we had it at 16,000, but the actual code red system is just under 11,000. It's like $10,987. That's the only limit that's on line, so I, I just true that up to the 11,000, made final adjustments.
That's really it. I have to answer questions, but it's only two pages.
Yeah.
Is this a good time to ask how the emergency preparedness build-out is going?
Yeah, sure. Put pictures up. I think I had a picture my last time here. But, yeah, the studs are, steel studs are up, the trenching has been done for a lot of the electrical and whatnot that needs to happen underneath, and they're well underway, so it's, it's going well. I haven't had an update this week, but they're, they've been down there and been out and plugging away at it, so.
Sprinklers that finished today?
Oh, perfect, there you go.
What did Jack, sprinklers, modifications of sprinkler system?
Sure, yeah. And in fact, we can do a tour sometime, because, yeah, this kind of is crossed over, but it's been in the works for quite a part, three years. We have a state grant that we received $450,000 to build an emergency operations center in the basement of town hall. Cheshire's never had a formal emergency operations center. It's, it's nice to have there at, in town hall for a variety of reasons. One, you don't actually want your EOC to be at your firehouse or your police department in front of the road, because during an active major emergency or national disaster, there's a lot of people coming and going, a lot of cars out, servicing the needs of the public. So, town hall is deemed a good location. It's also central to our entire service system and network and everything there too. So, yeah, down in sort of the, not quite catacombs, but the basement of, of town hall, we identified a former file, Jim's, Jim's file, file room for various documents, some of which have been digitized instead, and some of which we just consolidated with other storage areas to give it space. And we went through a design process to create, it's not an enormous room, it's probably , I don't know, maybe this side of this room or half of this room, but there'll be, you know, kind of a traditional video wall or kind of four TVs on one side, modular, very similar to this, modular desks that can be reconfigured, and also radio stations, communication stations behind, you know, the glass wall, allowing for sort of a backup in the event of a major issue, a major outage affecting the police department or elsewhere, that somehow the generator wasn't working or something like that, you'd have various communications, but also representatives from fire, public works, just for cod and others that would have a station available to them as an EOC should have for a central number of communications. And, yeah, so it's, I'm excited to have it. Again, some of it dates back to my first, I always say, my first week on the job here. We had tornadoes in the south part of town. We've had storm Isaiah's and other major disasters, and we really never had a kind of central point. I mean, you could convert a room like this, and we would, in the event we needed, we'd use this room a couple of times during those storms, as a place to check in. But it's nice to have a spot where the emergency management team can get together and react and respond to a storm or a major event. And also in the off, non-emergency times, it serves as a nice training room or area where you can even do a, you know, a munis workshop or something like that in the basement, have some staff get trained up on that equipment. It's all covered by state.
Got it, Chris?
So, yeah, we want to move to capital. That will be now in your vertical book, if you have it with you. It's our first time kind of going through this. So, on page 187, I'll let you flip to that, first time this year. You'll see the request, just a reminder, when we talk about capital, you will see that the only year we are actually recommending approval and appropriation is that first year, fiscal '25, '26. The other years serve as planning years, but they are worthy of conversation and consideration as they affect our future debt service models. I'll say that was a topic just this morning when Jim, Andrew and I had our bond rating presentations for both S and P and Fitch, both at nine o'clock. for both S and P and Fitch, both at nine o'clock and 10 o'clock today. So we're happy to have that in the rearview mirror. But they certainly asked a number of questions about our future debt planning, right? Because this is the first major one. We're issuing sixty million dollars in debt today, well, next week. And because of the schools, right? So they're asking, "Well, what are these other things? What are some of these future debt obligations you have?" And our charts are pretty dramatic, as I saw in, as you showed, as I showed, and you saw in some of our presentations. But that assumes a lot of these years, two through five, are going to happen exactly as they are. And we know in reality, just like this year, I ended up only approving, recommending seven million dollars worth of capital projects. A million of that is included in a state grant, a million is CNR. So about five million, five and a half million have added potential debt from what I proposed for year one. Just as an example, last year that number was thirty-six million in year two of last year's plan. So I've moved out a lot of stuff. We were never going to add another thirty million dollars of projects this year, particularly in the second half of the year. So I just say that as kind of an overall capital caveat as we talk about any of these projects. It is important to keep an eye to years two through five. This morning was a reminder of that. But mostly what we're talking about approving, recommending is that first year where Jack will talk about the firefighting equipment and clothing and also the replacement of the O1 pumper truck as the two items that I suggested for...
Okay. The protective, as everything else does, our protective clothing keeps getting more expensive. It costs you about seven thousand for a jacket. And so the jacket just relates to, it's about seven thousand per person. I don't get 300 fools, I don't get 300 pounds, 200 clubs, another hundred for food. So I'm not being dramatic. We've gone up just like everything else has. And lead times are still a bit different since four or five months ago. So that's why I did have to increase that money from the last appropriations years. The replacing of the engine.
Well, before we move to that, sorry, just another orientation on that page. Sorry, check. But just as a reminder, the way this chart works, you may say, "Wait, are we bonding for clothing and equipment? That doesn't make sense." You follow way down a little bit of an I chart test there. You'll see 200,000 recommended for capital non-recurring fund. That means it's not bonded for paying cash for capital, provided we put enough CNR in the overall operating budget, which again will be a conversation to talk about our five major budget lines, right? But we're recommending 200,000 of cash so that we're actually paying cash for those pieces. We're not borrowing 20 years of debt to buy firefighting jackets. I just want to don't let that be any confusion. And again, the detail for each of these items, as you recall, are on the following pages. So back to the pumper.
The 2001 pumper is another, it's just another one of the fleet. And we have pushed these out already. But the others, I don't want to leave, you know, leave the apartment position. Some new person comes in, he's got to buy five fire trucks for a piece of that. We're heading down that road. So if we don't start buying them as it is, we're going to wait three or four years to get them. So the ones we ordered last year will get 27. And the ones we order next year will get around three or four years to get them. So the lifespan of these pumpers will be far as...
What do we have right now that, is there still, how many are we waiting for, I guess?
Rescue, a rescue.
And when was the rescue ordered at the same time?
Last year, I have, I don't remember. It was last year.
And does that come in quicker or...
They're all, they're all twenty-two, twenty-three.
Remember, we didn't have the approval for those. When you said, when you say last year, those had to go to referendum. So that's two Novembers ago. Couldn't be ordered until, I think Jack was on the phone with me, it was Wednesday morning, to place the order.
Okay, because I didn't make the lead time.
And so they were ordered as soon as they possibly could, right after the referendum was approved and they had permission to do so. But, yeah, to that point, it is a three-year lead time. And as much as I didn't want to recommend this, I really was trying to skinny back all of the capital in the first year here. When you consider that's an O1 pumper and it's coming in three years, if you replace the O1, that's going to be nearly a 30-year old. We don't, if we don't get this to referendum after this year, you're looking at 2029, possibly 2030. Because that's now replacing a 29-year-old vehicle. I think the industry standard is to try to do between 20 years and maybe 25 at the outside.
Twenty is, twenty is standard. But we get, we get 20.
We get 25.
We maintain a well, Public Works does outstanding job, Public Works remains.
But 30 years gets back to that, that, and I actually just pulled it up, it was $25,000 rescue. Fourteen, you were right. Fourteen thousand was the break job, but it was the servicing of rescue one. Just this year alone was $25,000. So, and you can't, as we know with any of our vehicles, you can't just maintain forever unless it's a classic car, you know, at the level we need for servicing the needs of the fire departments.
So the aerial apparatus, which is a 98, you put off till next year. But that's three years older. Is there a reason? Because it's a, the pumppers? We use, we have two ladders. I'm comfortable pushing that out a couple of years because the one that we bought, I can't remember what year.
Eighteen, right, the eighteen.
They will reach the top floors if somebody uses the buildings.
Both.
That's a good question. That's our second ladder. And so, yeah, we've talked about that a lot. The one primary ladder is, is used a lot downstairs. It goes right in this building right now.
Can you explain how, if we're putting the finance, if we're putting it in the capital budget this year, but it's a three-year out before we get it, we have to put 50% of it?
We choose, we don't have to, we choose to because we receive, I don't know if we did that this time. Because I think that, they used to give you a significant increase if you paid for everything upfront. And if you put half down, it could get a little increase. I don't know if post-COVID they did that. I don't recall doing that in the last five quarters.
But that whole 1.1 will come off, will be in this year's, correct? Even though, we may not get it for three years and have to pay it, or will that, how does that work?
Are you talking about when we'll fund it, when we'll get the bond to be issued? So it would be, again, we wouldn't have approval, given the referendum number, until after November of this year. Would it be in next spring's issuance?
Probably not, but might, yeah.
Yeah, maybe the earliest. So you'd see it in debt service for the following, because not in this year's.
I mean, because I would add some extra money in your budget for marketing because I think that people of this town are going to need to understand why, what the needs are and make sure that, that it's, people understand the importance of public safety. And with a lot of these new apartment buildings going up and things like that, we do need to make sure everybody is safe.
How much would we recruit when we get rid of the old truck and sell it to the secondary?
Not much. We sold one, the last one we sold, we sold the best deal. I think population was about, not the case. And we got, I think, 12 or 15 out after 25 years.
The market's, yeah, I figured it out, right?
Yeah, if you're in the trailer, then I can tell you about the best. But the market is pretty saturated and not making it sound worse, but we're done with the fires. If it was like the cruisers that you'll get, they sell for nothing. We wash our actually.
I'd just leave the building more.
Those are the only two in this year. I'll answer questions about it the next five years if you'd like.
Just, Peter's question. So there, right now, we're waiting on just two trucks. The one, did we, so the ones that were ordered before that, they've come in?
We haven't ordered anything, we haven't ordered anything in the few years prior to the issue.
Has it been two years? Was there a gap of two years?
Two capital budgets ago was the November, two Novembers ago is what I was talking about. Before that, we didn't have apparatus for at least three months.
Oh, really? I thought there was, I thought it was every other year.
I think that's a great idea.
So the other item I see is the North End Fire. Does that work out?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I think, I mean, that's just a tiny, the number there was for planning and design for 450,000 dollars. I don't think that's ready for design yet. And I think we need a lot of conversations, council and community conversations about the need. I think we want to see the North End built out, look at response times. You know, of the two issues, I think volunteer staffing is the biggest issue affecting response times versus having a physical building, my personal, I mean, we talk about this a lot, as you can imagine. But the other piece to remember in all, part and parcel of the conversations we're having around revenues, if you look further below that 4.5 million that I've moved it out to year 28, you look all the way down, you'll see 4.5 million offset as local available revenue. That's because it contemplates using the TIP district funds to possibly pay for that. That's a conversation to have. But in terms of modeling out the financing, if we were to build the North End Firehouse, we might want to consider using the TIP district funding. But if we can double count that, we're counting on that, paying the CDA out and then having that help us with building it, too. So they, all, these are all interrelated. But I think some, some planning and response that we often talk about, you know, we have three stations. We have the South End, we have Byham Road. I've said before, you know, the distance from Byham Road to intersection of 691 and 10 is, with lights and sirens on, is doable. It's a quick, pretty quick drive. It's important we have volunteer firefighters there to drive that truck. That's what I said, the two issues, I think that's the most pressing concern. But, but, yeah, that's a, that's a big conversation. I know it's been a big conversation for over a decade as we've talked about development. Feel free to change.
I definitely, Sean, I talk about this, I think everyone. 691 is not a bad idea, but if you get on 691, it's hard to, kind of stuck. Before happens, 26 will be there all the time for accidents and fire issues. It's tough to get a fire truck to a fire on the highway. I did through that to get to it. So there is some stuff we have to go through.
So, and when we talk about the design process and the construction process, have we, I keep on asking this question, and I don't think I've got an answer yet. Have we, have we talked about a site selection process?
Not, I mean, not in any great detail, no. I mean, we've had conversations around parcels that are available, coming available. I know that, that came up when we talked a bit about comparing goals and objectives about the North End parcel that we have across the street, which, remember though, has to be used for economic development. Can't be carved out for any municipal use. So that kind of limits that actual acreage from being...
So none of that can be carved out?
Unless we had special permission from the state of Connecticut, all of it is supposed to be developed for economic development. So, but there's been other parcels up and down Route 10 that I think are being considered. One of the, you know, talking a lot about as possibilities. But I think we need, you know, site selection is important, but we need to make sure we need a site first as well.
Yes, I don't see this on the agenda for design next year if we haven't even talked about committing to a site. I mean, I'm fine with the concept, but I don't really want to talk about hiring a design professional until we have some direction ourselves as to what we want to do or where we want to do it. And I really think, honestly, I think we should be looking for a site. We can always decide not to acquire it. But if we don't acquire a site at an opportune time, then we may miss an opportunity to actually implement this if it's necessary. So I think we're missing, just think we're missing an opportunity by not making that a priority, is finding a site. If we think it's going to happen, we should be looking for a site. So the developments occurring up there, maybe we can coordinate with other developers that would carve off a parcel to support the town. We'll know of other large parcels that are subject to development. I just, it just, I would like to see us do that. I'd rather not, rather not see us talk about design until we have some clarity of where it might go.
Yeah, and certainly, I think, I would certainly support pushing it out even another year from what you see in the plan. I don't, I agree that I don't think design would be in next year's first year capital plan if we haven't had that conversation. First of all, around the need, second around where is there a physical location. So I'd be fine pushing that out another year. And, you know, as we talked about during the goal setting, I think identifying both the site and the need in the near term is something that, you know, that she was sort of challenged to do. And I'm certainly supportive.
I have a couple of sites in mind.
That's, that's great. I mean, we'd like, you know, like to be able to evaluate them and see if there's interest in working with the town. Now, maybe if we get ahead of the, ahead of the process, we can work on something really advantageous for the community. And we could always return the site or something if that doesn't work.
Sure.
I just wanted to ask, I'm built on that. I, I'm aware, but mutually aid, I guess, in that area, what could we expect from the Southern? Do not even know where the fire station is.
We have a firehouse, Clark, should we hear where the manor is?
Yeah.
Go out, take the road, go past the manor and, and you go up the street. It's on your right hand side above.
South Southern Station is about a minute away.
Right, but, but that's not staff all the time, right?
They're having their own staff.
They have volunteer all the time.
And I'm, honestly...
They have a paid staff. They usually, they pull it out sometimes according to the north and the south. I don't like to rely on them because, this is going to be, so, so, I don't want to be, I don't want to rely on station, station being set. It would not be in the best condition of, or to rely on the station being set. Last time, last time over there, over there, probably a couple of times, I went for mutual aid. There was two volunteers, actually.
But all that needs to be, yeah, thank you.
Sean and I have talked, if you wanted to talk something entertaining, hey, I love the, about the staffing, we just got here. I don't know how that would work. I don't know, I don't know that that works anywhere. But the unions and the area communities, probably it would be something we'd have to work out for. But I'm sure they would take our...
Before, since we've broken through to capital for the first time, you guys, you guys, meaning Sean and Jim, put together a chart for us last year of all of the old, whatever's on the books for capital. Can we have, can we have that again to comb through? Because one of the things that we'll want to do at some point as we begin deliberations is to go through capital probably with a fine-tooth comb to look to get some stuff off the books that hasn't started yet.
Yeah, I have, I have created, recreated that document for CNR and for capital. I'm just going to make sure it's all true.
Yeah, we, I mean, we don't need it in the next couple of days, but as we start to, you know, as the road is the road, so to speak.
Sean, as far as the, you mentioned earlier, the chart that shows our, our debt obligations or projected obligations are sort of phantom projects and stuff, they're sort of there, but not really there. Is there some sort of, you know, regulation at all or something that you sort of, you feel like you need to be showing the rating agencies that something is more or less going to happen? Or can you kind of leave it off as like a list of things that you may have, but we don't actually have on the objection?
Yeah, it's a, it, it's a good question. It certainly came up, as I said, it has a topic today, and we won't know our rating until next week. But I would say we maintain a policy of not having debt service exceed 10%. We explained that and we pitched that as one of our fiscal controls during our presentation. And then we flipped to a slide that's showing in some out years, we're up to 14, 15%. So you're, you're immediately having to explain, well, you know, that's because there's projects out here. There's a whole lot of borderhead projects over there. There's state, there's 60 borderhead projects that we're looking at in the next five years. Got to pick on that, but that's a lot. In 40 last year, somehow we had 20 capital projects this year. Those aren't, those can't just be placeholders because they do have an effect when we are putting this rating presentation together. The document Peter referenced, I, like I said, I've already created. It's been created and passed out last year. There's a lot of approved but unspent capital projects in some apartments and certain borderheads. So we have to really look through those projects and give a hard look of, are we spending what we've already approved? Why, we're also asking for more, and then we're planning for years two through five to have even more. This is, I think, a real crossroads kind of a budget to really get a lot of that more realistic and rein in. Because I would like to see that curve, you know, hovering around. We know we took on $90 million in debt to do the two schools. They understand that. Rating engine, we talked about that extensively this morning. They expect to see a flip. They'd expect to see us go up to 12% or so for a few years. But it can't just be an ever-growing percentage of a growing budget, right? So, yeah, I'd love to see that moderate back to 10%. We're at 6% right now, but we can't be at 15%. So I'd like to see us at 10%.
So what's the process for doing?
Zeros. Writing, writing zeros. Where it says TC for each of those, in all seriousness, count counsel. You are the final say of what's in that line. That zero becomes... That zero becomes, stays a zero. And some of those budgets, we say, we're sorry, Department of Ed, we're sorry, Board of Ed, we're just not going to be able to put that in the five-year plan, it's not realistic. We just zero it out and take it out.
But obviously it must live somewhere as a potential project at some point, right?
That, that, yeah, in some cases maybe, but in some cases maybe it's not. Again, I think this would be a broader conversation, but there's some items that I think are being requested as capital candidly that I don't think should be capital projects. The Board of Ed added a project to replace gym equipment and gym mats this year. Why are we bonding for gym mats and gym? I think we're moving maintenance projects, I'm just being honest. I think we're moving them out of the operating budget to try to keep the operating budget low and we're borrowing from it. Which remember, every million dollars we borrow, we end up paying 1.4 million after you pay the principal off.
That's why I asked the question the other night about debt service.
Right. So we've got to get it back.
There's projects too that have been on the books for quite some time and they haven't moved.
Yeah. That's what I want to take a look at. And on both sides, you know, in fairness, on the town side as well, if, you know, there are, the more stuff we can close out, the better off we'll be.
Does it have like a policy on that where if it's not done in a certain amount of years and we, a lot of them have, it gets removed or?
Absolutely.
I think, you know, carrying a lot of these things going on over three or four years. Yes, you can, you, you adapt the capital.
Okay.
Thank you.
You?
Thanks, Chief.
You're up, Jim.
Well, we let Chief drive several in there, Sean. I'd say what I let Chief drive several. Question about the Public Safety Committee mission budget?
Oh, yes.
4400 or something like that, is that what I saw?
Yeah. That's on page 104.
Yeah, it has been somewhere.
Yeah, I thought that they sort of, I think, I don't know what the, what the budget is for.
Well, they, that might be one of the topics that the chief will go through a little bit. I know Lieutenant Miller currently, I believe, is the staff for the Public Safety Commission. I did receive a request as part of this budget. They did ask for $5,000 to continue updates to the safety message board signs. I did trim that by $1,000. I was respectful of the request. I, I considered cutting it down to what it was last year, which was $750, but I figured that's a good conversation as a commission budget for the council to decide what you'd like to appropriate.
We do a lot of.
Hey, you can jump ahead.
Yeah, little cha-chi type things that we give out at the Fall Festival.
Right.
Yeah, we, we put it in their budget because it gives them a budget. But I mean, people generally walk away from our table at the Fall Festival or at the half marathon or we have a table at the, yeah, always give us a table at the home show and stuff like that. So it's always nice to have, you know, a little, you know, squeasy stress ball sort of thing. We've done bags, we've done water bottles, things like that. The end of the world, if we don't do that for a year, probably not. That's generally, they like to purchase that stuff more.
So along those lines, I received a question from the Public Safety Commission asking if it's possible for them to try to receive grants outside, you know, from town and potentially solicit businesses to support funding some of those items?
Jim, a question, thank you. Probably money from anywhere, I guess. I mean, you, the council's the only appropriate authority, so you'd still have to appropriate any donation to them to spend. In terms of soliciting donations, I mean, that's done that before. I know the former chairman, Frank Lomen, certainly, through the John G. Martin Foundation, have done some donations. That's what we did with the Bike Bell Program and other things. So there's a precedent for that, certainly.
But to the library, isn't that?
I would just be cautious only because being a business owner in town, we get a lot of mail from, you know, from the police department, from the fire department, from a lot of other organizations asking for donations. So to be asking, you know, a taxpayer in this town to maybe up more money for something, I think it's, it's, it's a slippery slope, I think. I mean, if somebody comes forward and says, hey, well, how can I help? That's a whole different story than we could do it.
I assume that could be a Public Safety Commission gift now. You could put money in.
Correct.
You guys would appropriate if somebody sent in a check saying, I'd like to donate this to Public Safety Commission. Probably the easiest way to do it is an existing method.
And maybe reach out to the arts place with the design assignments or maybe they can help. Design assignments, I mean, first place.
All good ideas.
Thank you.
Sure.
So if it's all right with you, I'll just start with the, kind of the high, high-end overview. A lot of this ties into our staff, so I just want to give you a little bit of an update on that, you know, where we are. Primarily because with 87% of my budget being tied up in salary lines and only 13% going to non-salary expenditures, if we're looking to make cuts, it doesn't take very long to get to people. You know, the, the majority of the non-salary line is tied up with, you know, the maintenance agreement for the, for the radio system that Jack mentioned that comes out of my budget. But we, we signed up for an agreement that had an escalator, so it's up over $200,000 a year. The payment on the body cameras and the in-guard cameras is up to $100,000 a year. You know, there's, there's a number of things like that in various lines there. So I, I just wanted to kind of highlight that for you. So as, as some of you know, last Tuesday, we swore in our 48 officer fat to full strength. But bearing in mind my previous caveat with that, that there's, that's our three newest recruits. They start the academy in New York tomorrow, literally tomorrow. So they'll do six months of training at the academy and then they'll come back to do three months of field training. So right around the first of the year, they should be out on the road by December. On Wednesday of next week, we go to an academy graduation where we graduate two. And then before the end of April, there'll be another academy graduation for another two. So we will be at full staff. But as we're talking today, seven out of the 48 are either starting the academy tomorrow or still in, in their training. And even the ones that graduate next Wednesday will have, you know, again, figure, figure July 1st before they're, those two are up ready to go, at least August 1st before the others are ready to go, so.
So on the road, how many do you have?
Available for duty right now, 41 including the deputy chief. But it's been a long time since we were at 48, no matter how many are in training. Forty, you know, 48 is the number and we're there right now. Now, that being said, there are currently four people employed who have, who are beyond their 22 years of service. Which is kind of for the legacy pension people, that's a kind of a magic number. There's another one who hits that mark in July and another one who hits it in March of next year. So that's it. So at least one of these folks is just waiting for, to see what happens with the, with the lease contract because there's a provision, there's a proposal in there that affects the, the employee healthcare through the VIBA plan. And he must wait to see how that works out before he retires. And I'm told that he will, he will, he will retire one way or the other. He just, he's hoping that it's an enhancement coming out. Most of you know Dennis Boucher, you know, hired in 1987, so he's in his 38th year. Could go anytime, shows no signs of wanting to go anywhere, which is why, yeah, could retire at any time. Shows no signs of wanting to. Ryan Schechter is another one, well over 25 years now, could go at any time. And there's always one or two who are, you know, looking for jobs and if something popped up, they would, you would maybe take a job. So, you know, are we, are we out of the woods? No, I could easily see us, you know, being at 48 and having to retire into the next four to five months and, and, you know, having to go right into the, to the hydrant process. And so, again, just to kind of give you the overview there of where we are.
Chief, just as we talked about staffing.
Yeah.
Would you say that the, the force is, in terms of their sort of average tank, is it, is it, has it gone down for them? Because you have so many, so much turnover or is it mainly the turnover, is it the younger officers anyway? Because as the sort of collective experience and experience, has that number kind of gone down or are we still in good shape?
We're, we're in, we're in okay shape for a, for a bad reason. I think I've, I've told you before, we are, it's not people at 22, 25 years who are retiring. It's people with three and four years who are designing to go to other departments. So we're roughly 50, 50 with a, a good mix of people who, who still have, you know, 15 plus years of experience. And then, you know, but we are, as you can imagine, we have two just graduated from the academy late last year. Plus the seven that are going to be, you know, by the end of the year, we'll have nine people on the road who have less than two years of experience. So that adds a little bit of a concern, but we're able, when they're on probation, we're able to put them on different shifts. So it's not like, it's not like we'll have all, you know, nine of those and six of them will, will be the entire mid-century. We don't, we don't do that. Senior officers still some of them, so, and while they're on probation, we can move them around in different shift, depending on what makes. So that there's not a very one shift that has all the brand new officers on and, you know, it's good to know. Yeah. So again, similar to, to what Jack did, I, you know, Sean has done a great job of letting us know that this is going to be a, a challenging year. There was, there was nothing that we put into this budget that was like, hey, let's see if we can sneak one by the goalie. It is, it is largely a status quo budget with the, you know, the, I know it says 5.35%, but a lot of that is, it's the placeholder, right, for the, for the, pretend for the contract settlement. Because, you know, that, as you all know, that's, that's still out there. But again, as far as the, you know, as far as the non-personal stuff, or, you know, non-salary line, Sean took the, the scalpel to it a little bit already. You know, we could probably squeeze out a few more things there if we had to. But there really isn't anything in here that you, that I think you would look at and say, ah, why did this go up this amount? Have any of those questions, let me know. But again, I, I consider this largely a status quo, there might have been 1,000, 1,500 there. I think the, again, the radio maintenance account did go up because there's an escalator for each year that we go out in the, yeah, it went from 201 to 212. But again, that's a, that's a sign of maintenance agreement that we entered into several years ago, so probably a much choice. Again, like, like my colleague, any of the nice to haves are coming out of the gift account. Again, we're, we're told that Art is going to do that again this year, which is, which is great. But again, all our specialty uniforms and, you know, any, any training beyond just regular recertification, we're already made out of, out of the gift account.
Is there, are there items in the gift account this year that you could maybe put off, go without and use that toward like the radio maintenance or is that not for some reason?
Yeah. Look, I know.
I mean, obviously we don't want to rely on gift.
It's, it's different, different times, right? You know, it's always been explained to me over the course of my 14-year tenure that the gift account was really not just a planned general operating budget stuff. Now, you know, do what you tell me to do is, is, you know, the bottom line there. And again, I think we'll be niddling around the edges of that already with some of the smaller, the smaller items here, like, you know, cuts that have been made that we'll have to, that we'll have to supplement with the gift account. And bearing in mind, we already do that, like, you know, we'll get to the capital in a minute, but we spent a significant amount of money out of the gift account for light bars and cages and computers and all of that stuff. We don't, we don't spend, we don't put that in the, in the capital budget when it comes to the cost of cars. So, yeah, look, is there always room here? You know, I think, you know, the, the thing that comes to mind, there is some training expenses in there that we could, that we could zero out and pay from the gift account. But, you know, total will get 210,000 this year. The maintenance agreement is 212, that would mean that I'd have to cut everything. I wouldn't be able to do anything else with it, including the money that we already rely on or earmarked in there that we don't have to get to pay for like the upgraded equipment on, on the cars and things like that. So I, I would, again, I, I mean, we certainly will supplement the, the operating budget this year with the gift account. I just want to want to comment to how much until we see how it all works out.
And, you know, I, I, similar to what I did earlier with the fire department budget, kind of went through it and just trying to find the nooks and crannies. One thing I had a question about was, and if you could, you call me an hypocrite, this is one of the, the line main budget? Which I tend to, one of the people that ask about this a lot, but I know we have gone up. Our, I thought we did several years ago, we were in the 20,000 range for line van, then we've gone up in the last couple of years. How are we doing at this point in terms of our inventory of potential projects as far as, you know, doing crosswalks? Or, I mean, how, I think the last few years, we've, we've done more of it than we typically have done. So I'm wondering kind of where, where we're at, is that something we can put back on?
Being perfectly frank with all of you, I know you're going to start knocking on doors at some point. I know that that's one of the, one of those things that people will, will talk to you about. Year, election years pass, we've gotten calls.
In our election years too.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah, it happens all the time. Somebody notices that a crosswalk gets worn out. They should all be in relatively good shape, but it's amazing how quickly. They'll be better this year because of the milder winter, right? They didn't, you know, they didn't have salt sitting on them, so they didn't get a plow scraped over them, so. So we're probably, we're probably in better shape than, than we have been in recent years. But again, I.
Yeah, we, we budgeted 75,000 in 2024. We dropped it last year to 45,000 and this request is up to 55,000. So it's kind of fluctuating.
But we're, we're using that budget every year, we're easily using that budget more or less?
Well, in 24, we used 73,000 of it.
That was a 75,000.
Yeah.
I think some signage, anyone comes out of this too, is that right?
Yeah.
Sometimes if there's a replacement, road signage, it might sometimes it's going to.
Yeah.
I have a question about patrol overtime.
Yeah.
I mean, last year was at 420,780, now we're budgeting 375. Is that mainly extra duty stuff for like road construction or, and how, no, it's not.
None at all.
So that's Wall Street. So the reason for it going down is because we added additional officers we're getting?
Yeah, we're anticipating not having to hire as much overtime because at least for the second half of the next fiscal year, we should be at or very close to being fully staffed.
So fully staffed, if we do fully staff now, what would that overtime be? Would you guess around 300 maybe? I'm just curious because it's just, it seems like, you know. I'm just curious because it, it, it's just, it seems like, you know, are we fully staffed if we have to put in that much overtime?
Yeah, so that, I mean, that, and there's always, there's, there's probably a formula there at some point, like, you could save sixty thousand dollars of overtime if you hired a new officer at seventy-five thousand dollars.
That's what I was getting at. I'm trying to figure out where, what's that number?
Yeah.
That we can take away from some of the overtime and add another officer if we have to.
Yeah, it's, I think we're in a pretty good spot right now, like everybody else. I'm, I'm playing the wait and see game with the North End development. You know, retail centers tend to, you know, they attract some shoplifting and some other, you know, maybe some other permanent activity. There's going to be a, you know, a couple of restaurants there, you know, bars and things like that. Um, again, it couldn't be a better place as far as I'm concerned. People come in from out of town, they cross Route Ten and get right back on the exit ramps and, and off they go. Although I suspect that, you know, some number of people from town will drive up. Uh, you know, if it, if our calls for service go up by ten percent or something because of that, then we'll, we'll, we'll have to have a conversation about, um, you know, about adding, adding some officers. I mean, I, if I had my way right now, I'd say fifty-one was a good number. Uh, and what I would do with that is make sure that the patrol shifts are staffed with nine, there's always nine officers on each ship. Now, I mean, that means that a third of them are always scheduled for the regular day off. That would mean six would be there, but again, bear in mind, the overtime comes up when somebody calls in sick, somebody's away on vacation, there's training that has to be done. Uh, you know, that, that's kind of where the, where regular overtime comes up.
It just seems like, oh, it's a lot, and, and I'm just trying to figure out, you know, I'd like to find out at what point do we hire more officers, can we save any of that overtime? And that's, that's kind of really what I'm trying to get at because it's, it's, you know, there's almost a half million dollars last year, so.
Well, you know, we're called to, I mean, part of it, part of it is, um, you're jumping about having this wrong, but, you know, it is the vacancies obviously generated a number more. And we had a specialty assignment issued this fall, we had a SRO position where we had a special arrangement, agreement with the union where folks could effectively continue to do some of their specialty assignments if they opt into overtime. That was for this year. That was a unique, strange set of certain, I hope unique set of certain things. But also, I think, as we talked about a little bit with contract negotiations, that, you know, the leave provisions and the ability for officers to take leave is what can sometimes generate the overtime. It's not just being fully staffed. There are components of it that even if fully staffed, depending on some of those leave available options to officers, you may find yourself generating overtime. There's no perfect world where even if you're fully staffed every day.
I'm not expecting no overtime.
Sure, of course, but. But that's just another contributing factor.
One of the things that we're, you know, we have a proposal in the contract, we'll put a cap on compensatory time that people can work. The problem with doing that is that some, when they hit that cap, the next time they work, instead of taking overtime, they ask for, they have to be paid overtime because they've got a cap. So, again, I'm, we get that going, we should have a sense of it by, you know, by this time next year. If I'm looking at it going, oh my God, the overtime budget would have improved, uh, you know, maybe that, maybe we were better off with all the comp time. Uh, you know, but there are.
The contact costs overtime in its own way.
Yes.
Take time off.
Yeah, when, when, when the officer can take the time off. Uh, and again, look, it's, I, if we went to fifty-one officers with nine on each patrol ship, the minimum staffing right now is three officers. I would want to go to four, which I would have to negotiate with the union because I think we start generating extra calls for service and traffic issues around the, you know, the whole North End, the housing and everything else, that, um, you know, three's not, three's not enough. What, you know, an active shoplifting case is, is your, is two officers, you know, or the officer and the sergeant, and, you know, suddenly, you know, you get a domestic in another car to town or a, or a relatively, you know, serious car accident and everybody's tied up, you know, very quickly. And sometimes maybe you're only sending two cars to the bad accident when, depending on, you know, if it's five o'clock in the afternoon somewhere on South Main Street, it might need three for the traffic and everything else. So, you know, I would want to increase the, the minimum staffing, all of which would have to be negotiated, you know, so. Um, yeah, I, I, a lot of, a lot of, you know, to be determined, uh, you know, as things start to go online up there and, and, you know, see how it goes.
Jim, I said, we're, we're not going into the budget so much, Jim, but you, you're beginning to get close to fully staffed. What, what has caused that to change? Because I know you've been struggling for a while. Do you know why? Do you have any sense of why? We haven't figured the contract yet, so it's still, that, that is a change that they have.
It, it has not. Um, I think, I think you're starting to see a little, the pendulum swing a little bit more towards being a little bit more pro law enforcement as opposed to, say, four or five years ago in the immediate aftermath of George Floyd and, you know, COVID was a big thing, uh, you know, staffing numbers went down. I think it, not just in the police department, right? But there's been an, uh, an employment issue. Uh, so I think that part is starting to swing. Even though the contract hasn't settled, um, the, you know, the union members have been briefed on the, on the proposals, so I think there, I think maybe there are some who are saying, well, if that goes through, I won't consider leaving or I'm going to wait, you know, I have opportunities to go somewhere else, but I'm going to wait to see if this, if this contract goes through, um, before, you know, because I'd be happy to stay here if, if that, if that happened. You know, and again, bear in mind, we, we did have somebody resign to go to another department as, as recently as December thirty. Uh, but I'm, uh, you know, I think some of you have met the new folks, they're, they're, they're squared away, they're, they're, they're pretty good. I'm cautiously optimistic that on Tuesday, when I go to the graduation, uh, we're going to have both the class leader and the, uh, the, so there's two Chester officers who will be graduating. One apparently has been the class leader for almost the entire time and the other one was selected by his peers to give the class a break. So, I mean, high caliber people who really took to the training and did well and, uh, you know, again, I feel the same way about the three we're sending off tomorrow.
It's, it's a good story.
It's, yeah, it's, right, it, yeah, it's, it's, it's a good problem to have, um, there. So I'm, look, again, I'm just, I'm just hoping that, uh, you know, that there isn't, you know, this other onslaught. When you, the officers have to stay here for three years, otherwise if they leave a department, we would have the, we'd have the right to, to request from the agency they go to to reimburse us for, I think it's fifty percent of their, or some prorated amount of their training costs. So I'm just hoping that there's not a group of people who've been here two, you know, two and a half years who are waiting for that three-year anniversary and that they're going to be like, hey, I'm off too. I, I'm not hearing any chatter like that. And again, I think some of it is waiting to see what happens.
Just curious.
Yeah.
So you mentioned earlier that you told with your budget, they eighty-seven percent salaries.
Yeah.
People, it's hard to get to any kind of reductions without, without the people, obviously, but just as an exercise, I kind of look, if we, if we had to cut two hundred thousand dollars, for example, it's obviously a cut fee. So, um, in terms of dispatchers, for example, we have eight dispatchers. Is that, uh, the number we have to have, if we need more, you know, and I'm, I'm, just as an example, I suggest to, again, give us an idea where we stand as far as dispatch, dispatchers.
We're, we're not mandated to have, there's no mandated number of, of dispatchers. Um, we like to have a civilian dispatcher working the dispatch desk. The problem when we were lower than that is we were pulling officers to do overtime. So now you have somebody who's higher paid, uh, and, you know, working in a, in a position where their skills are not, you don't need a sworn police officer to do that. And when, when we were lower than that, it would happen all the time, you know, the dispatcher, yeah, dispatcher called in sick. Sometimes now there's two dispatchers scheduled to work. Only one of them ends up being there, but, but we can, we can do that.
Right.
Um, if there's only one scheduled to work and they call in sick, now you're pulling an officer. And it's, you know, you have to, you have to, dispatchers have the right of refusal on the overtime, you know, you've got to put it out there and immediately if they call in sick for the last minute, you're holding somebody over. It can, you know, it's, it's difficult, uh, there.
Is it A and sort of, or are there actually touch then? That's.
Yeah, so we have three on days, three on, uh, on second shift and two assigned to mid-end. So it, it's been a while since I, uh, since I've seen an officer work the desk for a whole shift, uh, unless it was, uh, you know, around the holidays when, you know, and again, we had a, we had a gap there, we had a dispatcher who retired, um, right around July first of last year and took a little bit to get, uh, to get the other people on board. Again, there's, as you can imagine, it's, if you've ever been in there, it's, you know, people, it's not a radio anymore. It's like eight computers and ten screens, everything is mouse controlled and so there's a learning curve there, but, you know, we are actually, uh, last week, I believe, our trainee dispatcher who replaced the one we, uh, retired back in, um, back in July is able to work on his own, you know, so. But again, there was a little bit of a lag in the hiring, uh, you know, while we interviewed some folks and then got him in and got the trainee. So, uh, yeah, that's, uh, you know, the one thing that we, that we, I didn't hit upon, we've all, there is a, a, there's, I don't know how to word it, Sean, is a, the records associate position. So, uh, we have, we've always had three, uh, records associates. We're able to cut that down to two and a half essentially by reducing the hours of one of the days. Uh, without getting into too much of the detail, we're comfortable that it can be done now with, with, uh, with two full-time folks. Although part of that recommendation would be that one of them, you know, say, be coming to the personnel committee requesting that we designate one of them as a lead records associate, I think is what we call it, to account for the supervisory role that she will have over the, you know, the block. We eliminate the part-time position altogether. You know, with some of the recent retirements and some of the new hires, people are a lot more comfortable in the technology aspect of things. And a lot of the work that was being done there has been streamlined and, and, and is being done in a much more computerized, where some of the, uh, some of the recent retired folks were a lot more comfortable doing it, uh, the way they had always done it, which, you know, in some cases was, you know, letters and mailing and things like that. So, uh, I'm comfortable that the work can be done by just two people now, so there, that was, there was a savings in there associated with the elimination of that position, which by the way, A, the personnel committee would have to approve that and a reorganization and, and reclassification, and B, we'd have to go and talk to the union about it because it is a union authority there.
Yeah, my next question is about the records position. So you're saying that isn't anticipated, but it actually isn't according to. Yeah, it looks like the way it was, you know, it was produced in here. I think that part-time is still in there.
It looks like it.
Yeah, so I, I think that it was sort of hung up in terms of the process, whether you get approval first of the budget and, uh, what it starts to look like. Um, yeah, I, I just was looking at that, so it's like that, that twenty-eight, roughly twenty-eight thousand, so.
Yeah.
So I think we can earmark that as a, as a potential. Again, there are a lot moving parts and some, uh, considerations we need to make sure. Had some conversations first, but, um, I just really noted that as a potential direction should be as a support.
And there's savings in the payroll there for the position is a lot more than we would anticipate paying a lead records associate giving them a re-class of, uh, a higher.
Right, right. It's still just a small fraction of the exercise and try to get to.
Of the fifteen billion? Yeah, it's not going to get to that.
I was just talking about two hundred thousand. Thirty-two thousand of that.
Thirty-two thousand in the salary in order to pay additional. What is, can you tell me what that is, uh, fifty-one oh six?
Jim might have a chance. So that's, um.
Which may do you want? Uh, eighty-seven.
There's a line like that, yeah, so. Salary adjustments are the, the placeholder for the raise. So in the police department, in July, there's, uh, every officer who has more than a hundred and fifty sick days gets bought out, paid out for, for the hour for the sick days they have over a hundred and fifty. Uh, anybody who served in the military or who has a college degree gets a, uh, education or military service bonus. Cleaning and clothing allowance gets paid to the officers in, in July. And one other thing I'm not thinking of, but those, the main, look, the, the bulk of that is the sick time payout, uh, payout.
And, and the, the increase by thirty-two thousand is because.
Part of that is two years' worth because you're holding for expired contracts, right?
Yeah, some, yeah, some of it.
Okay, so.
But then as, each year they go, so you earn fifteen sick days a year, so at, at the ten-year mark, you hit the hundred and fifty-sick-day cap. So if we start having officers who are hitting their tenth, eleventh, twelfth anniversary, now they're suddenly at the end of their, that year, if they've managed enough to use any sick time, suddenly they're up to the full fifteen-day.
So you're buying fifteen days?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, one other along lines of staffing, I, it's, and I'm not only suggesting we become crossing guards, but, uh, have we looked, I mean, the locations of the crossing guards are, are we, do we kind of review that once in a while, make sure they're in the best places where there's most traffic? How do you guys look at that?
We actually, we were forced to during COVID.
Yeah.
Because all of a sudden people wanted to, you know, they want to put their kids on, on bus from school to school. So again, we, we do try to, you know, some of it is, you know, common sense, but, you know, like there's ones, right, at Highland and Wicks, right? But we have to carve across Route Ten, we have to cross the country.
Yeah.
There's one, uh, you know, one down at, uh, Maple and, uh, Highland and Country probably up there too. Uh, and then Chatting or, uh, Blue Little School has, has something to do with it. There's somebody generally at, uh, Farm Hall, so.
And Oak Road.
Yeah, yeah. So we, you know, we, we try to do it, you know, your main roads, you know, again, somebody at Maple and, uh, um, through there. Uh, but it's, you know, I, I have turned down requests for additional crossing guards, uh, you know, for parents by just going and having one of the traffic officer squad that just sit there during the morning and count the number of people who cross, you know, like Country Club and, uh, Stoney Hill.
Yeah.
Like, like three cars came out of there during, you know, during that hour kind of window in the morning, you know, just one, just in merit, uh, of the crossing guard. We try to, if somebody calls and asks, I would send somebody up, uh, to, to, so we ended up with one or two, uh, extras during, during COVID, but then we've had some people leave to, to kind of be gave to staffs. And again, you know, I'm sure you, you know, me, providing a prime, they only get paid for the hours, but they're actually out there.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's, it's not a big number.
Right. Just turn it over to Rock.
I have a question. How does that factor in, um, what the expectation for gas and diesel would be on line I, fifty-two oh eight?
So the gas pump at the police department, uh, you know, has a, it's a, monitors how much gas we use, so we have, we have a really good idea every year as to how many gallons we use. And then it's a matter of getting the finance and that's a weird contract, right? It starts in Jan, it's a half year, so you get, so we're getting six months of gas of last year's prices and then the contract for the six months for next year, and it's just do the math after that. We have a pretty good sense of how many, how many gallons of fuel we use and it doesn't really fluctuate, uh, that much.
Fifteen thousand more than was expected, or is correct here? I'm just curious.
I'm not sure. Is it, did the price go up again? Is that?
I didn't, I didn't have to check.
Okay, yeah.
Would it be more vehicles as a more problem?
No, no. So my, my guess would be, and I, again, I'll have to check also and I can get the answer to you there. That the contract for gas starting January first of twenty-six is projected to be more expensive per gallon than it has been this, this way, but I can check.
Or the same other side of that is that last year's appropriation, we budgeted seventy-eight thousand. It's, if that estimated for this year is accurate, then we're looking like we're going to come in under budget. That would speak to a more favorable than expected second half contract for this spring. We could get that.
Dan from Barrow. Because I don't think we know, right? We're, we're kind of, it's a January first contract, we don't know what the, what the cost is. So we're kind of guessing.
Right. The calendar year.
Twenty twenty-four, it was eighty-four thousand, so that's what I'm wondering. How, how are you factoring this? How do you know, like?
So again, we're pretty confident with the number of miles or the gallons of fuel that we're using. It's all just that what the price is and what we're estimating the price is going to be for the second half of the year, but we don't know exactly what it is yet because the contract hasn't been signed or settled. Price probably hasn't even set.
How has it been, you know, we, over the years, we've been working at this extra duty and the, and the sort of the cost of, you know, the revenue that's come in from all the extra duty work that is obviously been due as far as traffic and having cruisers and cars that are replaced. Has, has that been, is that, has the spending decreased this year? Or is it, I think it's still going, still, still being utilized pretty heavily?
Yeah. I'm, much to my surprise, it is still, still very heavily, nobody bats an eyelash. Probably your cable bill and all your other bills are so high, you kind of get like mine aren't. But I think I have that.
And does that mean, as soon as some of that, as far as they're idling, that's going into some of the use of the fuel and stuff, is that, that's definitely compensated for by the?
I mean, I'm looking at almost two hundred thousand dollars a year of, you know, going out for, you know, just, you know, getting the cruiser rental fees. You know, we had a, that big year when Go Net Speed and the fiber was, was going in and there were sometimes seven or eight extra duty jobs a day. Every one of which wanted a car because they were moving around and, you know, whether just resting down the street or moving to different locations. But it, it hasn't, it hasn't come down as much as I thought. And then, you know, we have reciprocity agreements with Southington and Nagata when they don't, when they're not able to fill their jobs. We don't go to Southington very often, we normally go to Nagata. But all their vendors, they don't, you know, they're, they're told, hey, you're going to get a check for officer instead. You know, like, yeah, Tom will bring a car too, so we're, we're making, the town is making that revenue even when officers are going out of town.
Thank you. I was just curious, because I would have expected it to be going down, but I'm glad it's, I'm quite glad we're all glad it's staying at least level and, you know, I feel like we're still getting that revenue.
There may come a day when there just, when there isn't any more utility work or something going on and that, that'll be the thing that, again, look, I, I think that the companies recognize that, you know, you can have an officer standing out there with the yellow vest on, but when you're quarter to a half mile away driving your car up there, you can't, you don't know if that's a construction guy or a police officer.
Right.
But from a mile away, you can see the lights. And I think they, they feel that the, that traffic slows down to a much greater extent and their work, work sites are safer, but the cars are there, so they have, they haven't, like I said, they haven't batted an eye in hiring the cruisers.
So you suggest that to the state because they don't seem to need, they don't have to title officers for roadwork?
Well, yeah, right, I mean, you can't, you can't put a shovel on the ground on a highway and an interstate highway without having a trooper there, but yeah, there are. When state DOT comes out to do like, you know, maintenance and clean, like replacing their guardrail and stuff, yeah, they don't, they don't hire.
So the clients are usually utility companies or?
Utility and construction, yeah. Regional Water, Eversource, and again, or they're sub-hundreds, like tree companies are usually subbed by Eversource and.
So it's been, what, two years since we, did the price increase on this?
Yeah, that's about right, yeah. It went from twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour again.
So.
Could be considerable with that, going up that.
A little bit, right? Sounds like the demand is pretty strong.
Nobody's, nobody's batting an eye.
I mean, Eversource has no issue with raising our prices.
Yeah, right, might have been a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like the demand is there.
What are, what other humanities charge, do you know, offhand?
It varies a lot, yeah, yeah. I, we kind of set it at, at the low end of it, you know, twenty-five, and some are still at twenty-five. Some have a different way of counting, like they charge a flat rate for the day. No, ours is, ours is thirty dollars per hour for the hours that the car is out there. Some people are doing like a hundred dollars for the job. If you want a cruiser, it's a hundred bucks. If, if you're, if the officer's only there for two hours, you still got to pay the hundred, but if the officer's there for eight hours, they pay the hundred.
You're still.
Yeah.
I look at it as, as providing a lot of value to them. It's a, it's a, it's a safety for them and giving them work. I'm sure it helps them in insurance and all that stuff too. I should just be excited to get work. I mean, I would, I would suggest looking at pricing, I don't know what the, is everybody? Do you want to sub them in or? Do we sub them in?
I mean, I'm not sure, you guys don't need to.
Well, how many hours a year, you know how many hours?
I can get you that number because we track, we track it every, every payroll because we have to build a company's key mission.
Yeah, if you get the hour, if you figure out if we, if we make, raise it ten dollars an hour, that's how much more we're going to get.
Yeah.
Is it the number that you figure out, six, two hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's kind of my rough thumbnail looking at my revenue estimate on my capital budget. It wasn't the exact amount.
Six thousand five hundred dollars, does that make sense?
Yeah, it could be. I can get you, like I said, we tracked it for every payroll, I can get you the exact number.
If we go ten bucks and sixty-five thousand.
That sounds.
That's something.
Sounds a lot, I mean, it sounds like a big jump to have it out of.
We went, we went up from twenty-five to thirty in the first one. Let me get to the exact number so, again, you know, you could, you could get an exact number out of it.
We could go up, you know, six bucks instead of, make it look relevant.
Well, we'll run out with the exact number.
Okay, all right.
So just, Herr, could we establish a dedicated lease, like a fund for the cars?
You can do that.
The sale of the old cars, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I thought we created some, we created some, I thought we created some kind of a fund where we're running, we're going in that, that can be utilized towards, you know, purchasing new. Like we do with all the work there.
I listed on the capital budget, the fee as revenue.
Right.
I don't think Jim likes it that I do that. I once told Michael my loan that that money just disappeared into the general fund. I was the angriest he ever got. Yeah, see? It goes into the general fund. I would have enjoyed it for the entire town.
I can hear Mike.
Yeah, can you?
Yeah. Dedicated to that part fund.
Okay, so.
You may have heard I have an animal control.
Yep.
Again, it's almost like the civil preparedness, it's a very small budget.
That's all the salaries.
It's, yeah, the vast majority, and again, it's even minus ninety, ten salaries. We anticipate that some costs will be down this year because we don't have thirty dogs for the first time in two years, so, and we are, we, again, we're, we're back to being staffed with the full-time position and the thirty-hour position are both permanent staff. And again, without that number of dogs, there's, people aren't coming in on the weekends and the days off in order to clean and feed the dogs. So again, I, I'm probably not the time to suggest any conspiracy, especially seeing that's such a small number to be hit. I'm just not sure where we would, what we would.
Yeah, I don't have any questions on this, but, you know, anyone else?
Wait, just one quick, because it did come up. With the full-time position of being in the trouble, how many hours do we use that, forty? And we, it's brought up that our current one has two part-time jobs as well, which, you know, I mean, I understand for these other part-time jobs. But the question is, in two other towns, you know, our town comes first, I know, I'm assuming. As, is it, I don't know how it interacts, if there's something happening in one of the other towns and, and she's working full-time on ours, is there a way that she would say, well, I'm going to leave, take a break from my job and go to that job? Or is, or is she have set hours?
Yeah, look, April has set hours here. I think once in the fourteen years I've been here was there a situation where she asked to take, again, asked to take comp time or personal leave time.
Right, right, right.
It was just an hour to go and address something. A person had died, like a, not suspiciously, in their, in their home and their dog was loose inside. It was either, it might have been in Durham, I think, was my recollection. And like the dog had to be, you know, secured so that the EMTs and the officers never would begin in there to address the death of that person. Other than that, she just tells them, well, I can't, I can't come right now. There's just that the animal control officers in those towns also, even though they're part-time.
Well, yeah, like, the reason I have it isn't to say, don't do that. The reason is, is to explain to everybody that, you know, we all have jobs and we also have off-time where we are allowed to do whatever we wish. And, you know, if, you know, there are a lot of comp time, there are a lot of that type, but I just want to make sure that it's understood versus, you know, it's not like you have three full-time jobs.
Right, it's Durham and East.
Yeah, small, small.
Yeah, they're very small.
They're part-time jobs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have capital to discuss?
He wants cars? He wanted four. I recommend two. Page one fifty-six, that's the summary. Those version, page one fifty-six, you'll see, just a reminder again, this is our kind of catch-all, multiple sub-departments within. And then page one fifty-seven will have the detail sheet with respect to the request for Neil's portion of the general services account. Again, as I just said, there were four cruisers requested, I have recommended two. And I guess I'll turn to the chief to explain a little bit about the car replacement program and what to get you, and maybe add a little bit about the model or make of the vehicle that you said recently purchased, I know we made it, or Dodge purchase as opposed to a Chevy diesel.
Yes, you probably noticed that there's a couple of new Dodge Durangos running around town. Because we were having trouble getting the Tavos, Dodges were available. They're pretty popular with, with the officers, they keep them comfortable, they, they like driving them. They also come in significantly cheaper than the, than the Tavos do when we're able to purchase them. So, look, you've been very supportive of the entire time that I've been here. Four is kind of a sweet spot for us, but we can certainly get away with two for, you know, for a year. No, no, fleet's in good shape, you know, again, as evidenced by its generating revenue and everything else. You know, we, we hold on to, like, like Jack, we're holding on to, to our vehicles now to the point where, you know, I don't even know if we're getting any, we're scrapping them basically when, when we're done with them. But that's because for the last couple of years, all they're doing, they're driving from the station to the construction site, they're idling for, you know, six, seven, eight hours, depending on how long the job goes, and then they go back. They're getting very little actual mileage on them, although my friends at Public Works talk about engine hours and, you know, because they have to, they have to be on it in order to keep the lights and everything going. So again, it would, if, the fleet's in good shape, you know, we, we just, my car in particular is fine. I don't need a car, you know, if it's cut to two, we'll get two, two more cruisers. We will try to get two more of the Dodges because they end up coming in less expensive. And again, we, we, we find with two.
And replacing them at four here, we're like, we're turning over the entire fleet in five, six years?
It's a little bit longer than that, but because we're keeping more cars because of the extra duty stuff. But yeah, I mean, you know, we, all together, we, I think we're in excess of thirty cars. You know, with the, each of the detectives has a car assigned to them, judge four of them, the training officer, the court officer, move back and forth for, you know, there's six, six people who have taken home our privileges. So it's not just the line patrol units. And then we have some, obviously we have some special units, you know, we have our, we have our kind of mini-command post, we have the traffic truck that we use to provide a bit, so yeah. I would say we're closer to thirty, so yeah, for replacing four, maybe it takes a little bit longer than that, five or six years. And look, every once in a while, one gets cracked up and, and, you know, total unfortunate.
By the time we're letting them go, they're only six or seven years old, and you're talking about most.
Yeah, unless it's a, the ones that last longest are the administrative cars. So for example, when myself or the deputy get a new car, when, when mine has almost forty thousand miles on it now, again, I'm quite content to keep it longer. And it gets to fifty, so we roll it into the detective. So now, because the detectives are only driving it while they're working, the mileage tends to stay much lower and those last much longer. It's the line patrol cars that are the ones that are going shift after shift after shift. They're the ones that wear up quickly. So we have some that are, you know, we have some Chevy Impalas that, you know, probably twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteens. Now, I wouldn't want to drive them too far, but if somebody's going to training and merit it, you know, we, we like to, you know, drive one of those cars. If mine's at the shop, I'll take it, just roll and come back and just run.
Do you, I, I, this is unscientific, but I feel like I never see a, a used car that is, it looks brand new most of the time. Yeah, could we, could we get away with not adding any new vehicles this year or would that be, just getting rid of that too much?
Look, I, will we still be able to go out on patrol and answer all?
Of course.
Yes, if we didn't have any cars this year.
I'm just saying, is that one year really, really knock us back? It sounds like we're going to end up in shit, you know?
Yeah, look, I think the pro, the ripple effect is what happens.
That's what I'm saying.
So it's not, it's not this year, and maybe it's not next year, but there'll be a year when I'll be asking for six instead of four, right? Because we'll have, you know, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll have, because we didn't replace any, we'll, we'll all of a sudden, we'll have the four that were bought.
Right.
Whatever, if, you know, in twenty twenty-three are now all much higher mileage, all coming up to be, that need to be replaced.
Jack will have old truck guns.
Yeah, yeah, but it's the same thing, like you, you know, like, you know, the problem with the fire trucks is, there's something you want to come in here and say, well, we got about five.
How much cheaper are they at Durango's versus the Tavos? We talked a couple thousand.
Over ten grand.
So why, why do we even look at the Tavos now if they, if they like the Durangos?
So we still have some pretty tall officers and they, you know, they, I would always want to keep at least, you know, like if we only get, if we get two, I would do, I would try to do one at one, just because.
So we have Jim check them out to see how.
Yeah.
I actually rented a Durango a couple months ago, it was pretty good.
Yeah.
It wasn't bad.
The, the Durango's a little narrower when you put the computer and everything in there.
I mean, Tavos is definitely a lot bigger.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Look, and the, the car thing, as Sean and I discussed, that kind of lends itself to, to, you know, if you cut it again to one, let's say, the people at Elon Park, happy to buy a car within. if you cut it again to one, let's say, good people at Elon Park, happy to buy a car within their existing portfolio. That's, that's, in my opinion, that's the place where I could use that, again, bearing in mind that we already have yearly costs that we, that we put out, things that aren't in the budget because they're already in Elon Park from year to year. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you to tell me I gotta buy all the cars out of that because that'd be all the money and then all the other stuff that's already earmarked up that would have to get, we either have to not get them or, if you cut it to one, I buy another car.
Can you explain why there's a need for six people to have take-home?
So it's myself and the deputy chief, you know, emergency response, subject to call back twenty-four-seven, as are the three lieutenants. They serve as the division commanders. And then probably, actually, it's before I got here, there was an agreement made that the detective sergeant would have take-home privileges also because he, he or she also has, you know, if there's a major incident where the detectives are being called back, the detective sergeant comes back also. That's, so the detective sergeant, the three lieutenants are contracted, myself and the deputy chief are, I guess, that will. We also have return-to-duty responsibilities.
Well, there's two, I mean, please.
Oh, as per the vehicles?
Yes. Oh, well, there's more.
There's, yeah. There's two other items that I would say, again, they kind of bridge Public Works a little bit, but we got both the animal control facility upgrades and prisoner cell renovations. I just draw your attention to it, we don't have to necessarily give you great detail.
I was just looking for the, the cell project.
So those were both on page one sixty-seven. Again, it kind of bridges, we call that the public property budget, it's really one sixty-eight and one sixty-seven, but these two happen to be at the bottom. And you'll see something a little unique in that the prisoner cell renovation project, at least, I didn't have, I put this note in my detail sheet because this is still, and as I'm sure John knows from the PBC, this is a little bit of an undefined number still. My understanding, just a few weeks ago, and John, please jump in because I was at a meeting, but, is that the pricing came back on the reduced scope prisoner cell project, but it was around, if not closer to the same pricing it was before, which I don't understand. So I didn't know what to put in the budget.
The architect wasn't there, they just, the chair said that that's, or someone, one of the prisoners, right, had said that that's what the architect came up with, there was no backup, no justification, no reason. It was very odd.
Very odd, and so for that reason, that's what I'm pressing, I didn't put anything in here, so know that. It's zeroed, not because I'm zeroing it out, I just put a note in the detail sheet. Didn't quite know what to do with that information. So, again, maybe something when, we'll have a little more clarity when Dan and Public Works are in to discuss further. I know I talked about it with the chief, I don't think he has any crystal ball on that project either.
And I'm happy to come back when they're here.
Right, because we know, we talked about it a lot last year, and I think we're expecting some savings in the new scope. So I think we're all in the same boat. So probably not, incredibly fruitful, we'll talk more about that one tonight. But the animal control facility upgrades, we can, you know, give a overview where that stands. Do you wanna start?
Yeah, so, as you know, the Department of Agriculture consent order had quite a few things in there related to the physical condition of the facility. We are the mason, because we need to have some masonry work done inside the facility to raise the height of, let me start it. In addition to us needing to renovate our building now, there are state regulations that go into effect in twenty twenty-nine that mandate certain conditions for either new construction or renovations that will take place by then. When we had the architect come over as part of this, hey, we're under the gun here because of this consent order, we need to get this done, he pointed out, he's like, look, for not too much more work, I can get this place up to standards so that it will meet the twenty twenty-nine standards. Now, it involved a little bit more work, again, some masonry work in particular. It's not just, it's not just replacing the chain link fence that some of you saw when you were there, and then having the epoxy put on, on the floor to cover the chip paint, which is one of the things that we got dinged for. It'll be a little bit of just reconfiguring, and one of the things that they, that they highlighted is our quarantine area. Now, we have the ability to do that, but then it requires a little, a hole to be made in the wall there so that the dog that's in quarantine can have access to a run also. So it would be reconfiguring the inside from sixteen runs to a quarantine area, I'm sorry, sixteen pens to a quarantine area, and I think it's eight, eight, eight pens and eight runs.
Each pen gets a run.
Each pen gets its own run. Now, it's not, you know, you know, the dogs in there aren't training for the Iditarod and this run. It's not much bigger, but it qualifies under the state guideline.
I was gonna say, it meets the twenty twenty-nine state standard.
Exactly. So, that kind of put a wrench in the works because, you know, as you know, we've been had, we've had an initial conversation or two about maybe going to a regional facility. We originally talked about maybe looking for a new location in town to build a new facility.
That's why you still see that one and a half million, and that's, again, something of a placeholder out in the future year, as we talked about last budget of possibly having to build brand-new. So it does seem, again, there's a lot, we still have some questions to be answered. There's HVAC components, I've talked to a number of other officials from other towns who are all in the same mode of trying to get up to the twenty-nine standard. And everyone has a little bit of a different story to tell as to how that, their, their plan to get there. But we want to at least explore renovating the existing, if we can get it to twenty twenty-nine standard and improve the entire facility and the outdoor area and the fencing and the, every part of it. It looks like it can be most cost-effective to do it this way as opposed to purchasing or acquiring other property and building scratch.
And again, we're, we're at the, we're just waiting, the mason was there on, I think he was there on Tuesday with, with somebody from Public Works, where we were showing him the plan and showing what he needs to do. We get a proposal from them, and then under the state regulations, we have to submit our plans to the commissioner of the Department of Agriculture, who then has, I think, sixty days or forty-five, sixty days, I think, to review the plans and, and give us the green light. But, look, I, I don't wanna talk out of turn, because I know there was, the HVAC, we don't have a number on it. But, I mean, I was thinking with just the paint and the cement work and the, and the new chain link fence, that it wasn't gonna be much more than a hundred thousand or maybe a little bit more than that. Obviously, the HVAC work, just, and that's, you noted that they, in the report, and, you know, they made a lot out of the, we need better ventilation, because with that many dogs in there, you know, there was really a very strong urine smell for, for a bunch of the time. With our normal two to three dogs in there, you don't notice it, but any HVAC and particularly exhaust was, was something that was known. So maybe that pushes us up into the two-hundred range, but, you know, some places are talking about, you know, six million dollar facilities and three million dollar, you know, brand-new, new construction facilities. So we can do it for a couple hundred thousand. Again, bearing in mind that if we don't do it, we have that Department of Agriculture consent order hanging over our back. Rather than, you know, spend a hundred grand on it now and then decide, you know, that we wanna do a new facility anyway, we might as well get it online. It allows us to keep it right where it is, we won't, hopefully get any, you know, I'm sure there would be some pushback, right? Oh, you're just hiding the problem now, or, or trying to avoid fixing it because you're saying you're gonna go to another facility. So if we can get it done for that, for a reasonable price, that would be valuable.
So you have an architect that's consulting with you now on just the consent order? Who is it? You're, you're doing that?
Yeah, so, there's a, one of their partner or employee architects specializes in animal control. You already sent the plan to, to, informally to a contact of his Department of Agriculture and got the, you know, yeah, that looks good, you know, they can officially bless it. Obviously, that's through the commissioner.
So this appears to, right?
Yeah.
To meet the consentor or to meet the twenty twenty-nine?
Twenty twenty-nine, it's yours to meet the twenty twenty-nine. I would have thought official, but it seemed like they were.
And you think it's gonna be a hundred thousand just to meet the consent order requirements?
We thought it was gonna be a little bit less than that if it was just paint and fence. But now with the little masonry work that, you know, maybe pushed the butts up against that, maybe goes over on a little bit. The wild card is gonna be the HVAC, but again, I think that's all, it's not, they didn't come in and look, oh my God, with the SUV brand-new, I think there was a, maybe they changed some, some.
Venting.
Venting and, and stuff.
I mean, I for one, wanna know for sure, but does the numbers are, and the commitment that we need the standard before we can come to this, I wanna say we need the standard and then it grows, projects technically.
Again, you have to, right, you have to submit your plans to the commissioner. The commissioner tells you, yes, this is good and we'll meet the standard. So we, you can't move forward without that.
So right now, you're not moving forward to meet, to meet the consentor, because we're waiting for a decision on this? Or this is, this is a time-sensitive issue or not?
I mean, it's time-sensitive in that, we need, we don't have approval from DOAC for any of the renovations, you know, at this point anyway. And as we're, as we were saying before, rather than just fix exactly what's there now, now in the absence of any dogs staying there, we want to first pursue whether this, whether we can meet the twenty twenty-nine standard for just a little bit more money, twice as much money, and then be, you know, in a much better place going forward without being stuck with the only option being to partner anymore.
Or you're building a brand-new facility.
We, we thought we were just going to be able to repair the fencing, but that would have involved ripping it all down and putting, installing all-new fencing, and that, in their mind, makes it a renovation. And if you're doing a renovation, you have to meet the twenty-nine standard, which is what it did for us to do the rest of it.
Now, I will say, the mayor, Bristol, reached out to me, we spoke last week, or two weeks ago now, I think, as they are, and there's been particles and things about, they're, they're the ones building or planning about a six million dollar, and they're looking for partners, looking for everything they want in a town like us to join in. They've included, they're dealing with this for about two years themselves, so the mayor had a lot of, at least his understanding of what needed to be done to meet various standards in terms of different HVAC systems and for different animal types if you're accepting a variety of different animal, that's beyond dogs and cats. And we're trying to run all that, what I learned through that call with, with both, over with our exec and through Public Works, of course, but I will tell you that from that conversation, as we were talking about partnering, or if we would even consider it, he would be looking for us to contribute somewhere around one and a half million dollars towards that facility, which is already the number, I mean, maybe it's coincidentally, the number that we had had in there as what we thought as a placeholder of building our own facility. But that seemed to be a much larger number than I would have anticipated. We would have needed to get, of course, as a share of a six million dollar facility, maybe that's, that isn't so unreasonable. But, you know, again, with our typical need, you know, that, that seemed like a much larger number to then also not have it under our own control and in our own borders. And with all the other logistics and regional sharing that goes along with it, that was a bigger number than I was prepared for. So I certainly wanna run it around first, this, this internal option with what we're paying far more to regionalize and partner. So that's, again, all being fleshed out sort of in real time, you know, at the staff.
Unless they can even have office to meet the twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Yeah, I already, I already zeroed it there because of that, but, again, I'm, I hope not overly optimistic, but I'm intrigued by this two hundred thousand, which is in addition, you may know that we have a hundred thousand in planning from last year, so that's really three hundred thousand total. We improved a hundred thousand to design this, right? Anyway, but if I might have gone wrong, but either way.
And by the, by the time that we're ready to approve the capital budget, we should have the answer as to whether this is gonna comply or not.
That's just what I was gonna say. We, the vendors, when we first thought, hey, we're just gonna, we're just gonna do the floors and replace all the chain link, they're like, this was in January. They're like, yeah, we can, we can do that before the end of the month. So I don't know that this project goes beyond July first. I mean, we could get this done before July, I'm certain.
I mean, that's our plan, it's just, yeah, we're just meeting our green light.
No, I'm, I'm just thinking that we'll, we'll know whether what we wanna do is gonna be in compliance. We should have heard from DOAC by then, whether this meets twenty twenty-nine standards or not. And if it does, then the answer to your question is that one point five becomes zero. I assume everyone agrees that, of course, but I still am confused. We're not doing anything until we get that answer. So you're saying that the minimum to comply with the consentor is on a whole intact, right? Now, you said, the contractor said they can get it done in a month or something. They're not doing that.
They're not doing it.
And that's okay with the consentor, or we don't have to rush this, this decision? We can wait and let it? Well, and they, they haven't given us a full answer yet.
They're the ones that have to approve.
Yeah, we're hoping that the mason will give us his proposal before the end of next week. So at the end of next week, we need to prepare our March monthly report to DOAC. We're hoping that we have that number so that with that March monthly report, we can submit the floor plan for them to review, you know, to kick off that review process and hopefully give us the green light.
Yep.
I, I take it back, I think earlier I said I thought there was, we use regular capital planning for the designers, so there's not, there's not a hundred thousand already approved, so is that two hundred thousand? That's what it means, but yes, this is also a good example of why, you know, I present the capital plan now. We used to present this in the middle of June, but in this case, it's beneficial because you can approve this appropriation at any point between now and, well, really, November is the deadline by chart. But, but you have the capital process. You're not held to the April thirtieth deadline one way or the other either, but we typically take this up towards the end of April or into May, adopt in June. If at any point you're ready and we have a green light, we would just seek your approval of that one appropriation and move forward as soon as we have the funding. Because it's not, at this point, it's not a referendum item or any other dollar amount that necessitates it.
That's all, Ken.
We'll go to Mr. Flock, or the gentleman that is here, any public comments?
Yeah, do you want me to speak from here or do you want me to?
You can, as long as we can hear you, you're.
Well, I hope for the, the camera's over here, so maybe it might be better.
Actually, if you would come and sit over at that table, then we could all hear you and the camera can see you. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
You can stop here if you want, I, I will. Welcome to the big leagues here.
Get the hot seat.
Thank you very much, my name is Kenneth Mita, I live at three sixty-one Charles Drive. I have been a resident of Cheshire for the last twenty-five years. Thank you for the opportunity to, to address the council. It has been a, a newfound passion of mine to pay attention to the fire hydrants in our town. And not just our town, but all of the towns in our area. And quite frankly, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that has been occurring over the years. And I think a lot of that is a result of some of the systemic changes that Chief Kastner talked about with the decline of the water tiers historically in a lot of towns. And I think Chief would. in a lot of towns, and I think Chief would agree that in the past years, volunteers did a lot of the maintenance work that will require on fire hydrants. As the ranks of the volunteers have declined, the manpower and the ability to address those needs is, you know, it overlooks a little bit. So I see instances now where the, the maintenance levels in, in towns surrounding our area have gotten to the point where we've seen instances of fire hydrant failures. Those types of situations can lead to severe consequences. I mean, we, we don't neglect maintenance on fire apparatus. We don't neglect maintenance on other necessary tools and equipment that the fire department needs to provide for public health and safety. And yet, if a million dollar fire apparatus pulls up to a fire hydrant in order to respond to a fire, that hydrant doesn't operate properly. We've really negated a lot of the other expenses that we've done. So I, I personally am very thankful that maintenance was a topic of discussion on the budget. I would just, in summary, like to mention to you, it's sometimes hard to find that the town of Cheshire has approximately one thousand three hundred fire hydrants in, in town. These fire hydrants are, obviously the water for those comes from regional water authority, but the town of Cheshire owns the fire hydrants in this municipality. And by agreement with the regional water authority, they are responsible for the maintenance of those hydrants. And council mayor may not know that the maintenance is actually spelled out in the contractual document with regional water authority in a document referred to as American Water Works Association Annual Seventeen. And that annual actually calls that the standard maintenance regimen is that each hydrant in town, it needs to be checked and maintained twice per year to ensure that it is going to be at its optimal functionality if it's called water use. And we have many hydrants in this town that have not been touched in many, many years. So I appreciate that it is a difficult, challenging budget environment for the, for the town. First of all, these are conversations that I'm actually having with other municipalities as well, and Cheshire is not at all. It is a common problem. But I think it's a, it's a common problem that needs some serious thought about how best to begin to get on top of that situation. Because the cost of maintenance is probably a small fraction of the potential for loss of life or access property. And it should be experiencing just one hydrant failure. So thank you very much for the opportunity to address. Any questions, please?
Yes, sir.
Oh, so thank you very much, because obviously, you know, not something we think about on a day to day basis, but obviously very important. So my question to you is, what is it about fire hydrants that need to be, like, you're talking about maintenance of them and, and hydrant failure. What is it that is, is failing? You know, is it the seals on them? Is it, is it the connection to the water line? But what is, when you say that they need to be inspected and maintained, so just for, for our division, what is it that needs to be maintained on them in order to keep them in?
Yes. So in answer to your question, the answer is yes to all of those things. The, the standards call out for approximately seventeen different steps and different line items that you have to check. But in, in essence, you know, one of the biggest problems is, is that firefighters roll up and the caps on the fire hydrants haven't been touched in so long that they are rusted on there, and they can't actually open them to access the, attach their hoses. Oftentimes, the operating stem, which is at the top that the firefighters have to turn in order to open the hydrant, hasn't been exercised in years. It becomes corroded, it's very difficult to open, and sometimes they don't open it all where they feel. Sometimes because the hydrants have not been flushed or, or exercised at all, that the seals on the bottom become jammed, they're stuck, it won't open all the way, restricting the flow of water. So you may get a partial flow and not enough to adequately address the, the needs of fire suppression. Sometimes there, there could be debris and water that needs to be flushed out of the hydrant. And if that is sucked into the pump truck, can cause severe damage to the truck itself. I, I could go on, but you kind of get the, the idea of what it is. The, the testing involves checking the water pressure at East Hydrant, at East Hydrant, to make sure that there's actually pressure behind there and there are standards for what that pressure should be. It involves attaching a gauge to that hydrant and flowing some water through there so that you can get an accurate spot check of the volume of water that's coming out of those hydrants. And then obviously lubricating and make sure that when, when the fire truck comes up, that the firefighters don't waste any time trying to hook their hoses to that, they can do it in the most, the quickest, most efficient manner so that they can get on the job of fighting the fire as soon as possible. In early stages, they, they say that a fire can double in size in just a few minutes, so those few minutes are critically important.
Right, I appreciate that, because that's, you know, for most of us, when you drive by and you look at a fire, that looks pretty good to me, you know, it looks, it looks good, so.
I think that a lot of times people don't see them. They drive by and they never see them, they never notice.
Yep.
Right.
But, you know.
Unless, unless there's something wrong, like, if there's something wrong, you might see it. But what, what you would normally see is a flat hydrant, most people are going to see, well, it looks, it looks like it's supposed to look, so you don't, you don't notice because it's not out of the ordinary.
There's a few of them that look like they're supposed to look.
Some that are painted.
But some don't look like it's supposed to.
Um, first of all, thank you for, for bringing this to our attention. I grew up in North Haven, and I remember twice a year, they would keep turning on the fire hydrants in my neighborhood all the time.
In the summer.
Yeah.
The kids, yeah.
Yeah, but they, but that was their way of checking. I think I lived on my street for almost thirty years, and I don't ever recall seeing one turn out. So you, you're making a valid point here. Are you saying that the regional water authority is responsible for this?
No.
No.
What I'm saying is that the regional water authority has two different arrangements with the different municipalities that they serve. Regional water owns hydrants in six different towns, Cheshire is not one. In the, in the towns that where regional water owns those hydrants, they are responsible for doing the maintenance. In the towns where the municipality owns the hydrants, that responsibility falls to the municipality.
Now, I'm assuming there's, I, I mean, I don't know if that would fall into our public works versus our fire department versus hiring a company to do this. I do remember several years back, there were some volunteers who wanted to go around painting of the, of, couldn't even allow that to happen because of, I think there was immune issues or something like that.
Well, you could actually paint them shut.
Yes, yeah, but that's the other issue. So, um, so perhaps what we, we probably should look into this and see, I mean, I don't know, Jack, if there has been issues when a truck has blown out where there has been failure.
Yeah, perhaps.
Perhaps.
Primarily that with the frozen, the battery gone.
So they have to drain down in, in the winter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, in our climate, we have what's called dry barrel hydrants, that they're designed to be empty until they're being used.
Right.
But there are drains at the bottom of the hydrants that allow water to drain out, that sometimes can become clogged. And so if the hydrant doesn't drain properly, there are dangers that the hydrant's damaged during freeze, freezing months. You know, there's a, there's a lot more to it than meets the eye. And in, in, in full disclosure, I am starting a company that I would, I'm going to be offering these types of services to municipalities. And I, I have a pilot program going with the town of North Haven. And I'm meeting with the chief noble in North Haven tomorrow morning to discuss what I can do for him as well. But I, I'm here to speak to you tonight as resident of Cheshire and to just kind of bring it to your attention that whether a crack company does it or the town does it in public works or fire department or any other mechanism, it's something that's really critically important for health and safety. Nobody wants to see somebody's house burnt down, but it would be even more tragic if it burned down because trucks pulled up and the hydrant didn't work and they couldn't fight the fire. And it's not hypothetical that Chief will tell you that happened a month or two ago, getting one of, where the truck pulled up, the fire hydrant didn't work. They evacuated the residents and they couldn't fight the fire until support from Wolden came in to help fight that fire. So it's a real, it's a real issue.
Well, I, I will thank you as well as my colleagues have. I can tell you that this is my fourteenth budget, and it probably hasn't been all fourteen, but it's been at least twelve to fourteen. And Jack will keep me honest on that, that we've had discussions about, specifically about fire hydrant maintenance. So it is, it is something we're aware of, it is on our radar. We don't always address it to the full extent that we should, I don't believe personally. But that being said, we, we've looked at other creative ways of doing it. We've talked about volunteers and, you know, all these other things, so, but, and we will continue to talk about it.
And I appreciate that. I, I think that we're really at the tipping point where the years of accumulated deferred maintenance are, are starting to really manifest themselves. You know, when the fire department needs to go and have custom made impact drill sockets made to put on their trucks. And why impact those? Because they can't get the hydrant covers off. I mean, that's pretty demonstrates clearly the need, I think that, that is.
So out of curiosity, Jeff, if we wanted to maintain the way they should be, you said they should be checked twice a year?
Yes.
So we have a thousand, thirteen hundred, approximately thirteen hundred.
Twenty six hundred visits.
Twenty six hundred visits, yeah.
It's, it's not a small task.
You can do that many in a day, like four or five in a day?
One day?
No, 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 four or five, I'm saying four or five days. I mean, that's the pace you'd have to do it, I guess, right?
Yeah. I am forecasting that you can do sixteen hydrant visits per day within an eight hour.
Okay.
I mean, uh.
Yeah, you need to do.
It generally says about twenty minutes to thoroughly go through when you value a hydrant. And if you find a problem, obviously you're not going to address it at that time, but you're going to earmark that for follow up maintenance. If it's a critical problem, you can alert the chief that a hydrant can be taken out of service until it can be addressed. So that, you know, things can be, there's no guessing, it can be in real time. And ISO reviews and ISO standards look at what type of maintenance program the towns have in place. There's very demanding rubber heaping that's required, but if you're able to satisfy the ISO requirements, then the insurance rate for the town can be approved. And that could translate into real savings for, for residents in the town. All of those things come into play, so it's not, it, it's, fire hydrants, they seem really simple and not very complicated, but it's actually a multifaceted issue that touches a lot of different aspects. Great, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks to you. Mr. Fock?
I had nothing to do with Chief Drake's overtime the last two years. When I say you keep him on for a couple of years.
I'm surprised when, when Jeff retired that it didn't plummet.
There were many willing to take his place.
Any other questions from council? With that, I will call for.
Do you want to cover one more subject tonight or?
Only, I mean, it, it's not absolutely time sensitive, because I recognize we're at kind of two and a half hours, and I just want to respect your time, but I, I was going to.
Oh, two and a half, yeah.
You want to do it? You want to? Real quick, just an introduction of the topic, as you may hear about it, probably have read about it in the news. A week or two ago, the state did pass, the governor signed through a line item, you know, bill, a municipal option to modify the depreciation schedule on motor vehicles. So you recall in my budget presentation, that was that twenty seven billion dollar hit. Towns have the opportunity to basically slow that depreciation schedule if they so choose. I mean, the council has to decide to do that though before, well, we have to file something with the state by April fifteenth, so there's not a lot of time. We would have to reprint our, and refile our grant list, we calculate our grant list, which does come at an administrative burden, also a cost with the, with the vendor. Try to get my arms around that, so again, I'm just introducing the topic right now, we don't need to get into great debate detail, I don't think. But I would, I would just caution, because I think it's being portrayed a little differently from some town leaders and state leaders, that this is not a revenue generator, it's not imagined generating new revenue. The levy, tax levy.
Or it's not a saving, or it's not a savings either.
Right, right, that's the, yeah, the other side of that coin. It's not, the tax levy is simply how much we have to raise that is not our non-tax revenue.
Right.
And that is simply a function of what our ultimate expenditure budget is, right? So the levy would stay the same, the amount we need to raise from taxation would stay the same. What would happen is you'd see a shift, and I think we calculated around four hundred thousand dollars of, of revenue that would be instead of being drawn from real estate property tax, it would shift to those higher car values, right? Shifting the burden a little bit to car taxes. Because so much more of our grant list is property tax, I would anticipate that would have a slight improvement to our mill rate. But to be crystal clear, the net impact, the average impact on taxpayers is the same, right? You're just kind of paying a little more from the car tax pocket, offset from the property, home property tax pocket. Obviously, in individual circumstances, depending on the value of your car or the value of your home, there could be winners and losers in that scenario. But taken on a whole, the levy doesn't change. So you're seeing it as an important factor, because I've heard some towns, you know, speaking about it, like, oh, we took advantage of that, or this is this great resource. It is if your only goal is a slightly lower mill rate. But again, at the end of the day, most taxpayers are looking for their tax bills out, and that really doesn't, just on average, change. So that's kind of my two cents on it. Get you some more information when we have it, I want to introduce the concept. We do have a few more meetings before, we also have our April eighth meeting where we would, it's right around the corner, where we need to take some action directly, assess or to refile, should be perceived. And we're seeing, I saw a survey today, that was going to be a volunteer responsive survey. It looked like about two thirds of the towns that had responded said they, it was like they were going to take advantage of it. Jim pointed out, a lot of those seem to be much, much smaller towns. I'm not sure why that is, but although I did see in the paper, I think this morning or yesterday, that Southland's were just, their council just voted two nights ago to go ahead and adopt the reduced.
Because the larger towns are already over a thirty two mill rate.
Yeah, and that's the real fact, right? So the, the reality is that helps you if you're going to be reimbursed for that delta, you want that car, and some of those towns want that car tax amount to be as high as possible. We are only at twenty seven four six now, and we're not even recommended to go above thirty one point one six in my recommended, so that's a great point, Peter. That is another factor why some towns. Does it, in that case, I guess, you're right, that's the rare instance where, for those towns, they actually are getting a little extra revenue, which will be for the following year when the state repays them for the property tax cap loss.
Can we switch to go forward? And we can switch a year from now?
There's also an option to adopt this in the following year as much. You could also approve it, approve fiscal twenty percent for the twenty five year. That is really helpful, this is. Anyway, so sorry to take up that time, but I just wanted to, I guess, put it on the table and think about it, it's true about it, you may read about it, and you become more aware of it, obviously. And if I have some information that's helpful to forward along, you will. That's, that's the potential modified appreciation. Thanks.
And with that, I will call for.
Motion, Joe.
Thank you. Second by Fiona, all the favor, we're done.